I'd like to call this Board of Education's Spursturg Bay meeting for June eighteenth to order. Would everyone rise? We would pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all.
Mr. News, could you do the roll call, please?
You bet. Commissioner Stark?
Here.
Commissioner Meyer here.
Commissioner Haas?
Here.
Commissioner Jenner John?
Here.
Commissioner Stefani?
Here.
Commissioner Cruz?
Here.
Commissioner Howard is excused. Commissioner Schultz?
Here.
And Commissioner Sprinkoff?
Here.
All right, excellent. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented that you have in front of you?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Haas, second by Commissioner Cruz to adopt the agenda as presented. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Now we are to the public comment section. I do not see anyone here, so I think we're gonna just skip through that. And then we are to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda consists as the following. It's a little longer, so I'll try to make this. You'll get used to hearing me here. Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May twenty first, twenty twenty five, which is in your back. Also approve May bills. Set grants and donations, and they are as follows: three hundred dollars from the PTG group for the four K field trip to the farm. High School Sailing Club, there was uh five hundred dollars from Jennifer, Jennifer Kobilka, also five hundred dollars from FLS banners. Auditorium received the following donations: five thousand dollars from the Kobilka family and three hundred dollars from Paul and Jane Graff. Sporting Clay's project, we have a three thousand dollar donation by Colin and Kristen Jean-Court and a thousand dollar donation from Chris Dupree. Fourteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollar grant for sporting clay range improvements for lights. Also fifteen hundred dollars from DCMC for Hope Squad. Six hundred and sixty-two dollars from the Sturgis PTG club for the kindergarten field trip to the new zoo. Next, we have approval of resignations and retirements. Megan Jane is resigning from her position at Sunrise and Sawyer at the end of the year. Patience Wolf is resigning from her business office assistant position. Lindsay Schreiner is resigning from her Safe Harbor associate position. Uh, Shelley Stenzel is resigning from her position at the high school. Sheila Lenke is resigning from her teaching position at Sunrise. Robert Destetella is resigning from his girls soccer coaching position. And Jane Lewis is resigning from her academic construction or coach position. Point five, approve the second reads of the following employee handbook related items. Uh, you know, regarding the professional staff employee handbook, there's a minor update from last month to define health benefits to health and dental benefits. To mirror the setup in the support staff handbook, we always wanna have those agree with each other, so there's no confusion. Uh, so A, professional staff employee handbook, B, the professionals' staff salary and supplemental guide, and C, the support staff employee handbook. That was all in your uh back. Uh, point six, approve fundraising calendars for twenty five, twenty twenty six. This is done annually as part of our operational procedures to prepare for the next school year. Containing your packet is the fundraising calendars for the middle, high school, and sunrise. As elementary administrators have reviewed for us in the past, items such as cookie dough and candy may be sold but are not consumed at school. Additionally, the focus is on on adults for something like a PTO fundraiser and different from some fundraisers which are at the middle school and high school levels. Uh, seven, approve Sturgis Bay High School student parent handbook. Eight, approve Sturgis Bay High School faculty and staff handbook. Nine, approve TJ Walker Middle School Student Parent Handbook. Ten, approve TJ Walker Middle School Faculty and Staff Handbook. Eleven, approve Sunrise Elementary Student Parent Handbook. Twelve, approve Sunrise Elementary Faculty and Staff Handbook. Thirteen, approve Sawyer Elementary Student Parent Handbook. And fourteen, approve Sawyer Elementary Faculty and Staff Handbook. Point fifteen, approve special education policies and procedures. Approval of the policies and procedures occurs annually to ensure smooth operations and that proper updates are done, communicated to the board and available to the public. We typically use the DPI sample guide. Uh, point sixteen, approve at-risk plan approval. The plan occurs annually to ensure smooth operations and that proper updates are done, communicated to the board and available to the public. Uh, point seventeen, approve early graduation requests. There's one early uh graduation request appropriately working its way through the established process and now comes before the board for formal approval in alignment with our past policies. Um, believe that's right on your, on your, on your desk, actually, right in front of you, in, in actual old school paper form. Uh, point eighteen, approve Wisconsin Association of School Boards, that's the Wasbe membership renewal. Uh, in the board package, the scanned copy of the renewal letter as well as a re- a report to the membership, a copy of a complimentary subscription of the publications we receive as part of our membership in the dues invoice. The annual dues would come to five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty big six school year fiscal year, which is a four percent increase. Uh, point nineteen, approve overnight athletic trips for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. Uh, Athletic Director Don Dupree has, has worked with our head coaches and Principal Nervy to assemble the overnight athletic trip request for this next school year. Obviously, a trip to state could impact this, but that would be nothing new or a reason to be concerned, meaning we don't know if, if there's something there that we have to approve, cuz we don't know any. Uh, we would kind of approve that at, at, at that point. As stated in the past, the thinking is to have all scheduled overnight athletic trips for the year approved at the same time at the start of the year in an organized fashion. It is appropriate to point out that special trips involving fundraising cost to the student, athlete, family, and/or supporting parent or community group. Uh, the school district does not use tax dollars in the form of budget dollars to pay for additional or special overnight trips and the related costs. Upgrades from a school bus to a coach bus and other such costs that may be associated with some of these trips now or in the future. Here's a quick overview of the trips submitted uh by the Athletic Director. Uh, we have varsity boys soccer tournament at Sun Prairie School in Racine, August twenty ninth to thirtieth of twenty twenty five. Uh, boys soccer quad in Cedarburg, uh, that's in September nineteenth to the twentieth. Uh, girls soccer games and college tour, January twenty twenty six. Boys basketball, summer basketball tournament, June twenty seventh through twenty eighth of twenty twenty six at UW Oshkosh. Wrestling technique and competition camp in Fort Dodge, Iowa, June eighth through the twelfth of twenty twenty five. Consequently, my son just got back to the camp. It was wonderful. Uh, wrestling, uh, boys team at Oshkosh on the water, Oshkosh, Wisconsin. Girls by state classic at UW Lacrosse. Uh, point twenty, board policy, second readings, this is point eighty, fifty-four eleven. New that third grade promotion retention at-risk students. A motion to approve the consent agenda as presented is recommended. Have attention. Move to approve the consent agenda items as presented. One second.
Thank you.
Who be whom? All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Schultz, second by Commissioner Starr to approve the consent agenda as presented. Uh, further discussion? All I'll say is I think these were merit sent agendas the last two months that I've read. It's, it's impressive. It is that time of year. Uh, hearing nothing else, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So now we're down to the operation, operations agenda. We have approving teachers. We have a second grade teacher. Uh, let Mr. Chernogle take over.
Sounds good. Thank you. Principal Katie Devillers is pleased to recommend Terry Larson for the second grade teacher position at Sawyer Elementary School starting the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Terry has earned a Bachelor's of Science in Elementary Education with a minor in early childhood education from UW Green Bay. She has sixteen years of experience working in an urban district, and most recently in parochial school settings where she taught kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. Terry's consistent efforts to investigate the most recent research and literacy applied in a classroom as well as a strong work ethic were both characteristics that set her apart from other candidates for this vacancy. Beyond that, her current colleagues and supervisors have shared that she has immense compassion for her students and dedication to ensuring that all of her students succeed. Terry's positive demeanor and perseverance when supporting students who struggle were evident during her interview as well. Excited for the possibility of Terry joining the second grade team, bringing her positive energy and creativity to support second grade students at Sawyer. Uh, pending board approval, we're eager to welcome Terry to Sawyer and congratulate her on the new position. Motion to approve Terry Larson as a second grade teacher at Sawyer School beginning with the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year is recommended.
I'll move to approve Terry Larson as a second grade teacher at Sawyer School beginning with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. One second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Haas, second by Commissioner Meyer to approve Terry Larson as a second grade teacher at Sawyer School beginning with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Um, further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're to a fourth grade teacher.
Sunrise Team is pleased to welcome, uh, welcome Kelly Kramer as a new member of the fourth grade. Kelly comes highly recommended to Sunrise. After a successful career in journalism, she went back to school to earn her teaching degree. She taught as a substitute for a year before completing this past year as a kindergarten teacher in Prairie to Sheen. Kelly impressed the interview committee in addition to her parent and student volunteers. We interacted with Kelly when she taught an engaging science lesson. A motion to approve Kelly Kramer as a fourth grade teacher at Sunrise Elementary School beginning with the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year is recommended.
I'll make a motion to approve Kelly Kramer as a fourth grade teacher at Sunrise.
Second. Right, we have a motion by Commissioner Jenner John, second by Commissioner Starr to approve Kelly Kramer as a fourth grade teacher at Sunrise Elementary beginning with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, you're a fifth grade teacher.
Yeah, listed a fifth grade teacher. We do not have a recommendation for tonight, but I believe Principal Smullen, we have a candidate coming in for a second level interview tomorrow, right? All right, so that continues to move along, uh, stage on that front. Uh, I can go on through letter E if that works. President Stefani, first, Special Education ID Autism Teacher over at Sawyer. Director of Special Education, Lindsay Ferry and Principal Devillers highly recommend Caitlin Larson for the ID Autism Special Education Teaching Position at Sawyer Elementary School. Caitlin is a recent graduate, University of Wisconsin, Whitewater, where she earned a Bachelor's Degree in Elementary Education and a minor in Adaptive Education. Caitlin has teaching experience in primary school grades where she served as a long-term substitute teacher. Caitlin is excited to join the special education team and eager to begin her additional uh credentials in support of all our students. A motion to approve Caitlin Larson as a special education ID Autism Teacher at Sawyer School beginning with the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year is recommended.
I move to approve Katie Larson as a special education ID Autism Teacher at Sawyer School for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Second. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Sprick, second by Commissioner Schultz to approve Caitlin Larson as a special education ID Autism Teacher at Sawyer School beginning with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're down to point F, which is uh another, this is a special education teacher.
Yes.
At Walker Middle School.
That. Director of Special Education Pupil Services Lindsay Ferry and Principal Mark Smullen are pleased to recommend Sam Marto as a special education teacher at TJ Walker Middle School. Sam will graduate from the University of Wisconsin-Madison with a Master's Degree in Broadfield Social Studies and minor in English as a second language instruction. Uh, Sam exhibited characteristics and qualities that the middle school team desired in a teaching partner. They described him as kind, funny, and relatable to both his colleagues and to students. Sam's clinical supervisor throughout student teaching highly recommended Sam as he demonstrated commitment to the profession and a desire to continue learning. Motion to approve Sam Marto as a special education teacher at TJ Walker Middle School beginning with the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year is recommended.
I'll move to approve Sam Marto as a special education teacher at TJ Walker Middle School beginning with twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner, uh, second by Commissioner Cruz to approve Sam Marto as a special education teacher at TJ Walker Middle School beginning with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Uh, further discussion?
I got a question.
Yes.
You might not know the answer. I'm just interested, what is broad field social studies?
So basically.
Sorry?
Broad rather than specific. No, good question. Uh, it's really how the licensure works for social studies. So, um, so both science and social studies kinda went with different types of licenses depending what you wanna teach and level, although the state has simplified that a little bit over the years. Whereas math and English, again, I'm speaking a little bit more from a secondary perspective have kinda said over the years, if you're certified to teach math, you can teach pretty much any math class, English, just about any English, maybe journalism. Uh, so anyway, broad field of social studies is really just kind of how they define that aspect of social studies separate from maybe economics or psychology or some of the other stuff that sometimes lies up.
Yeah.
So, um, any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So then that brings us down to approval of a licensed practical nurse.
Yes, uh, just if I could just back up very briefly for the board's benefit. Uh, so art and Spanish, so we had a couple resignations, so elementary art uh, moving outside the area late in the year. We purposely, for now, just so you're aware, have noticed this as our teacher, not only as elementary art, so as the team uh, looks at numbers across elementary, middle, and high school, we'll see kind of how we piece them together. It's possible we could have a little bit more traveling or whatnot. Not sure, uh, more to come on that probably this year and maybe even in, in future years. And on the Spanish front, um, so not a lot of applicants out there. The team is preparing, and hopefully we'd like to land a candidate. It's also possible that we may have to have one-year workaround where other electives step forward at the middle school level. We kinda do some reshuffling, focus on the other, the high school Spanish classes, basically with the teacher we do have, and then take a run at hiring early next hiring season. So, not saying we're not gonna get a second Spanish teacher. I know Mark, uh, had been communicating with one possibility already. Um, but I'm not sure how that'll shake out, just so you're aware. It's okay. No cause for concern, but just kind of a thought there. I saw Allison and I saw Andy.
It's been a race tonight.
Is that a first and a second or?
No, no, that too.
Okay, could you also mention, um, why the kindergarten teacher part, like, point eight is crossed out?
I have nothing specific to that. Principal Devillers, do you have anything tonight? I don't know. Once in a while, we have a placeholder from the past.
Oh, um, we went down, uh, we had four kindergarten teachers this year, and we went down to three for next year. Maddie will move to first grade, so my assumption was it looked like a vacancy, but when I came through, it was crossed, you know.
Thanks.
Or we're looking for someone that is kindergarten art and Spanish. We're not. Thank you, Principal Devillers. Andy?
In situations like this, um, is there, is there leniency uh on certification, right? So if, if we come across somebody that's fluent Spanish, like, we could talk about that?
Yes, okay. In fact, a person that Mark Smullen has spoken with may be from Spain.
Sure.
So then it's kind of, okay, what does that look like? Is that person is thinking about teaching and different types of certifications and paperwork and all those types of things, so?
Well, I just think.
Create an open mind for sure.
Yeah, there's, that there's this, you know, large Hispanic community here, and you would think that maybe somewhere out there would be bilingual enough to be able to do that. Cuz I, I just think it's important at the middle school level.
Yeah, yeah. Again, hopefully we'll have both, but it's just one of those right ones. Schedules are created and you get in the summer.
Yep.
It's one of those, oh boy, what if we don't find someone and so they?
You can wait so long.
Right, talking like, okay, in case we wouldn't, what might that look like? So kind of backup plans are in motion. We'll see. Hopefully, you know, a month from tonight, we've got someone that you can approve. All right, I'll go back to, uh, again, number three here. Approve, uh, Licensed Practical Nurse, right, or LPN for short, as many of us are probably used to hear. Director of Special Education Pupil Services Lindsay Ferry and our really district building principals are pleased to recommend Rebecca Haberly as our Sturgeon Bay School District Licensed Practical Nurse. Rebecca earned her Associate's Degree from NWTC. She's been employed at DCMC the past three years. She's also worked within the district, uh, previously and has established relationships with students, parents, and staff members. Really, that's as a member of the nursing team, as that's looked a few different ways here in recent years. A motion to approve Rebecca Haberly as a Licensed Practical Nurse for the district, beginning with the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year, is recommended.
I'll make a motion to Rebecca Haberly as a Licensed Practical Nurse for the district beginning with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jenner John, second by Commissioner Haas to approve Rebecca Haberly as a Licensed Practical Nurse for the di- district beginning with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Uh, further discussion?
I was just gonna add, some of you have heard about more of the discussion. I know some of us, we have current and past employees of DCMC. DCMCs aware of this. This goes back probably two or three years, as we've talked about. Do we go back at some point to employing our own nurse? And then while we're certainly satisfied with the, the support DCMC has given us, what's kinda come to Lindsay Ferry and at times building principals or secretaries is having ideally one or two nurse folks to deal with as opposed to the team that does move about and cover the different schools in the county. Would really be preferred as we've got more kiddos nowadays with health plans than we did back in the day when we had far more kids in school, to be honest. Uh, that's really a part of that, so no big falling out there, anything to be concerned with, uh, but that's I think fine tuning things down to, uh, serving the families that we currently have.
And us, I'll, I'll just add on to that, I mean, the stability in that position, if we hire them, I, I think is a, is a good, is a good thing for our district.
And it's, it's gone well with the, the RN that we, uh, employed.
Certainly, yeah, so. But, but if, if this, maybe. So, okay, motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, now we're down to approve a high school head cross-country coach.
Just for fun, cuz that's summer. Sports trivia. People who normally know, yes, my primary sport was basketball. I actually ran freshman year of high school cross-country. Absolutely hated it. But I did not quit. Yes. Maybe shin split for basketball, that was the end of that, but all right, moving on. Principal Nervy and Athletic Director Dupree recommend Morgan Kudrowski as the head cross-country coach, uh, here. Uh, Morgan has coached middle school track and field for seven years. He also has been a runner for a long time. Uh, she's, running is a sport Morgan enjoys doing as well as some coaching. Uh, watching students grow in their abilities over the years and celebrating new accomplishments is what keeps Morgan coming back each year as a coach. Uh, Morgan loves seeing students realize their own potential, uh, the add-on here as well. So a motion to approve Morgan Kudrowski as our head cross-country coach, beginning with the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six season, is recommended.
I'll move to approve Morgan Kudrowski as the head cross-country coach beginning with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six season. So I'll second that. For Kathy.
I think Kathy got you, but just, or just ahead, head there. If I so, right, so motions, uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Haas, second by Commissioner Meyer to approve Morgan Kudrowski as the head cross-country coach, beginning with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six season. Further discussion?
I just wanna say Morgan's been an awesome coach to my kids.
Yeah, well, that's good. That's a very good thing. Um.
I would recall some sentiments.
Good, she's, she's great. Good. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Um, then we have the approved preliminary twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget.
I can T F just briefly the notes in front of the board, which you see regularly, and then I'll turn it over to Business Manager Holtz, but the first paragraph just reminds us, in our own board policies, in this case, zero one fifty-five, believe it or not, entitled Committees. Right, it points out that, among other things, I just kinda paraphrased, I've got to specific quotes here. The board as a whole shall act at the Committee on School Finance. It jumps ahead right to some of those snapshots we see in April and May. And then, in essence, last sentence of that first paragraph, this budget shall be presented to the board for preliminary approval and Jules, and then as the board well knows, final approval in October. Um, again, you've been seeing regular updates. I don't need to reread all that. Why don't I just stop here, even though we know different dynamics around state budget and whatnot are still in play and turn it over to Jake?
Um, I have the notes, uh, on there. Think turning to the state budget, um, right, they sent out, uh, Monday uh, the memo about just kind of what the Joint Finance Committee resolution would do for us, um, or the ramifications, um. I think one thing in there I didn't mention, I did actually, as I look at it now, uh, we'd be seeing about seventy-five thousand dollars more in revenue. Um. Uh, in addition to, I had taken out in the recommended, uh, preliminary budget, the mental health aid, so under five thousand, um, extra in revenue than what's there, um. Uh, big impact on our local taxes, uh, what they passed, um. I will say it's, it's far from over. I know Dan spoke with Representative Kitchens, uh, shared this with him, uh, just to share the impact of, of, of what that proposal would have. Um, and I think based on that conversation, um, it kind of feels like this is gonna, as optimistic as I was last month, that, uh, we might have something by July first. Um, it kind of feels now like we, we might be looking back at that early fall, um. Yeah, I'm not sure, right, what to expect next at this point. Uh, I think the good news um, if, from a strict revenue and expenses standpoint, we're in good shape, right? We're, we're, we're not, uh, to go under, we've rights, uh, we're working on our staffing plan. That's trying to get ahead of the game. Um, it's not because we're short on rooms. Um, and so from that perspective, financially, we're fine. Um, you know, obviously, like I said, I worry a little bit about the ramifications of a, a, a big property tax increase. Um, and what that might mean for us. But, uh, recognizing it now, hopefully, again, can help us get out in front of it, uh, with any messaging that we might need to do, um. Questions?
Maybe I'll just say, and then tee it up if you have a question. So when you talk about being passed, right, it, it's in his documents. Some of you have been through this many times, some of you not as many, right, but joint finance, in essence, has passed it, right? It still has to progress through the Assembly, the House. Um, you know, Governor's Desk, et cetera. So that's kind of that process. We'll see where that leads. Um, and then I think, you know, as far as us controlling what we can through any of those positions, and again, I'm just using as an example, we still need to have, you know, maybe a little additional discussion in the district office, but anytime a position is vacated, right, we look at, okay, do we need to hire for that? Do we need to reshuffle it? Do we need to absorb it? So like, that part-time position uh, that was assisting, right, kind of, were patients then in that position, right, just moving into a, a job with another entity. At this point, we're thinking probably don't need to, or probably shouldn't fill that to model how we're looking at these different positions. How that all parcel? How that all parcels out, right, not completely determined yet, but just the kind of one small snapshot of what we're looking at and what the principals look at with teachers. I think maybe the other piece, again, you've laid it out here on the board, here's a little bit, maybe Jake, just in case someone is tracking uh our recording, or I know, like, sometimes. The legal women voters, right, takes notes and shares those, in your memo, you talked a little bit about, or do a nice job over three or four paragraphs here with the equalization aid. And kind of the impact, right, so it's not, you know, based on what it currently is, which again, isn't approved with all the different entities yet. Right, but even if we wouldn't increase expenses per se beyond what we planned on, under the current joint finance approach. As local property taxpayers, which we all are in some capacity, we could see, you know, a fairly substantial increase if. They don't address this equalization aid as they have, I think you said, right, in every state budget since two thousand one, but except for one.
Yes.
I just want to explain a little bit, what is this equalization aid and what are we talking about there, so.
Uh i- it's also called general aid, I think more often in the media you'll hear general aid, that is equalization aid. It's the same thing, different terms, both of them correct, um equalization aid as a reminder, several factors. Uh including uh property wealth per student, uh and how much each district spends per year. Um and uh the way the equation works, some districts, if they spend more, they get more aid. So that's taking aid from the pot. Some districts uh like us, the more we spend, the less we get, more we spend after a certain point, the less we get. Um and so even if we don't uh uh increase our spending, um. Right, there, there's more money being taken from the total pot, therefore, right? It's very possible and probable that we would not get as much aid, thus our levy goes up, up, uh. Again, equalization generally offsets our levy underneath the revenue limit. Um I know I just made this presentation for our new board member, um. And I have for the past few years, but uh the revenue limit is uh our tax levy plus our equalization. So that equalization aid goes lower, tax levy in order to keep our revenue limits uh goes up. The one thing outside of that would be our debt levy for Fund Thirty-nine, I referenced it a little bit in here, um. With what we've done over the past few years, uh five years, um. We've been able to put some aside uh for Fund Thirty-nine, that's our debt levy. Uh that we could continue, we under levy this year, we could continue that. Um we probably have a year and a half worth of payments uh towards our debt. Um that's one of those things I was really hoping, right, uh that could, that what we had set up could. Help us over, say, a decade, um but uh if we need it, it, it's there to help us with our total levy. So.
Do you have, I didn't read your note, um sorry, how much do you anticipate for property tax increase?
Um at least uh based on what was passed, uh projections, at least ten percent. Uh a good number here in a week and a half, uh you, you know, to look at, um. You know, we're not putting all our eggs in the basket, but uh July first, DPI is required by state law. To recruit, to uh uh put out uh estimated equalizationing. And that's based on the most recent budgets that are in, that's been reported to DPI. So that's based on budget, right, some people overspend that, some people underspend that, um. And so that'll change between July first and October fifteenth, but what's important, uh you know, th- this year, and why you might pay attention to it more. Is that um even if there's no state budget. It is based on the most current year budget, so it would assume no increase in the state equalization pot, uh equalization aid pot. Um and so uh that would be one to pay attention to, again, not lean on, but, you know. Can start giving us a, a, a better idea, uh tough again to tell right now, um. But uh I, I would say at least ten percent without. Uh the debt, that debt level, so.
You had mentioned trying to get ahead of this, you mean messaging, is that something that we're talking about with the Donovan group? Regarding messaging, or is it just something that we plan to communicate more with the community somehow?
Yeah, I would say separate from, although maybe related to the Donovan group conversation about, you know, what the district is, right? Return on investment from recent referendum and all the different type of stuff you read in that document that I'll touch on briefly later, but I would say. As Jake and I anyway talked about messaging, right, and we talked through what he just shared with you this week. Right, which is not the most optimist message you've ever seen from Business Manager Holtz, one could argue one of the more pessimistic messages yet, just the reality, right? And some of that's state politics. But I would say the messaging on us wrapping our heads around, like, okay, what, what is happening, right? Not that, as Jake and I have talked, that we're gonna take a political stance, uh you and I talked on the phone today. Like, but being able to explain, okay, once the state budget, right, whether it's very close to what joint finance has, or they figure some things out, like. Okay, theoretically, like, as we're sitting here in October, approving the budget and then the tax levy. That people understand, like, okay, even if we don't increase our expenses. Because of the way the state theoretically would be going about this, based on what joint finance has said. Like, people would see an increase, right, and we all know there's, you know, Keith Miller often would talk about short memories with, with these things, right? The reality is, we would have to message that a number of times, so people don't have a heart attack when they get their tax bill and say, Sturgeon Bay Schools. Did you increase your, you know, what you're spending and doing, ten percent, twelve percent, you know, whatever the number ends up being, and the reality is, no. Uh we didn't, that increase is related to the way in which this all happened with, let's be honest, our political leaders in Madison. I think that's, again, and we never want to have the sky is falling, right, regardless of how it all plays out, the sun will still, still come up the next day. School will open and fall, yada, 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 but we're really being sensitive to, whoa, this is very unique, in twenty-five years. If this is what happens, they've only played it this way one time before. This is gonna throw people for a loop, as some people would say, well, they're looking for a soundbite on how we cut taxes here. But then passing this off to local property taxpayers, leaving basically school boards, school districts. One can argue holding the bag, um but we will see, does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, Mike, is there anything I'm missing with that, with what we?
We talked about, I, I, I do think, once we know, right, cause right now it's conjecture, right? It's, it's not known for sure, but once we do, if, if something does come down the pipe, that we do have. A sizable increase, like, my entire time on the board, I've never seen an increase like this in a year.
Other than we, when we added the debt, but yeah.
Yeah, but good, Chris, we knew that, and the, and the, the voters approved that, right? So I mean, that wasn't a surprise, it was, it was approved, we've never had in my time here. I don't know about your time here, you, you, you have a few more years than me, but I don't remember seeing, you had, you had indicated, I mean, you're saying ten percent tonight. But you indicated some even higher percentages perhaps, so if that happens, then to your point. I think we really have to s- look at it seriously, that we are using our Donovan group or whatever to message, because. And again, not being political, this is what Madison, that's the governor, that's the legislature, whatever parties, all of them together, they did this. So that we're not, because otherwise, people are thinking, well, what are you doing, you're, if you hire eighty-six teachers, no, we're just, this is what happened. And I think we, we're gonna have to message that if, if it happens of it, now I'm hoping. That there's a midnight deal at some point here in the next few months, so we don't have this, but we don't know. We don't know.
Um in your discussions with uh Representative Kitchens. I, I know one thing I, I had read was uh he was kind of in favor of lowering the special education aid. From what was proposed, and um I don't know if uh, you know, what are, what are his thoughts if we recently had discussion with him on? On this.
Yeah, I think, so, not as high, and I, I don't think anyone expected with the different professional organizations or the governor were saying with the sixty percent, right? Especially when they said, well, it's gonna be thirty-three, it was really thirty, right, Jake's calculated that to the tenth or hundredth of a point for us. So I think what I have heard Joel say to a room full of superintendents on more than one occasion when we're at CISA seven. You've seen it in some of his local interviews, you referenced it in our brief phone conversation yesterday, you know, was really hoping it'd be more in that forty percent range. Uh you know, no, not all the way to sixty, but not in the low thirties, especially even after what we were told was actually less than that. So he was really, I think, hoping, I recall specifically around forty, year one of the budget, maybe a smidge higher year two, but kind of in that ballpark. Um what I had done, um but again, you know, we all get to contact your legislator, right, we have conversations, he comes in for sessions, whether here or in Green Bay. I don't contact him every time we see those, cause we all know probably how useful that is, but I did send him the exact document, in fact, I forwarded the email Jake sent you this week about. This is what it means for Sturgeon Bay, so I forwarded to him and included uh right, his staffers had read his uh, you know, legislative email address. And just said, okay, you know, you like knowing what's going on in your home district and what these numbers mean for a district specifically, such as Sturgeon Bay. Here's what it is, as always, if there's any other numbers or specifics you need, you know, contact him. He was on the road, so he just called and said, yep, Dan got your email from yesterday. You know, and again, I wish I was calling with better news, you know, negotiations and so forth in Madison, uh paraphrasing, right, are not going so well. Um now, he said, you know, some Senate Republicans and the governor were negotiating, thinking it was yesterday, I don't think I'm getting my data all crossed up here today. Yeah, that was yesterday, uh what comes of that, you know, we shall see, uh but yeah, he said, you know, realizes this would not be very positive. Um school districts in general in Wisconsin would be very disappointed with this budget, um you know, we'll see where it goes. You know, part of the whole process, right, some people are coming out as against whatever the budget is, right? He said, you know, there were some that were issuing press releases just two days ago, like, no matter what the budget is, they're against it. Okay, there's the political times we're in, whereas others are kind of like, well, I think we're supposed to, we were elected to figure something out. But then that gets into the, okay, if we need to figure out, based on margins, this party and this party probably need to talk to each other. Some people are on board with that, some are not, and in the end, he said, wherever that goes, you know, probably the governor, as we can all guess. Isn't gonna be on board with what's out there right now, and then where does that leave us? Right, and then that's where then that process takes a while, and like Jake said, well, nothing else by July one, things continue at the previous budget level, knowing. Well, that's probably not gonna be the case for the next two years out there, that makes sense?
Absolutely.
But yeah, that's specific to the special ed and then in general, yeah.
A- as you mentioned, this is gonna affect most school districts. Uh would it make sense for us to reach out to our neighbors about, in regards to the communication piece, because everybody's gonna see this? And, you know, if it's coming from all the districts, then it, to me, it feels a little different than. If it's just coming from Sturgeon Bay or just coming from Southern, you know, if you're.
Theoretically, yes, I can tell you that, so all four districts were together at lunch today, we had. Uh a meeting of the Northeast Wisconsin Health Insurance Purchasing Cooperative with our brokers M Three. Having to be a Door County Fire Company, we'll give them a shout out here for the, the dozens watching. Um and after the meeting, all four superintendents spoke just about several different things that would save emails. I shared with all of them that Jake had assembled this night, you know, we talked it through and he put the nice summary together to share with you. And that, you know, Joe Kitchens had received that as well and had called me, realizing districts are, you know, not gonna be happy with what they're seeing right now. Um I just said, you know, anyone else wants that, and Randy from Sebastopol's, hey, could you send me a copy of that? And so I told Jake that I had sent it on, so that, you know, as they looked at it by main topics, special ed, right, high-cost special ed, right? I mean, yes, it puts a little bit of a Sturgeon Bay flair on it, but they could easily, right, if Sebastopol wanted to use it or Gibraltar, to your point, from Southern Door, right? And put their own flair on it, and then depending where this all goes, back to your point, Mike, and maybe your question too, Allison, with messaging, like, hey, here's where it's at. Right, is there a point at which it's incumbent on us with our district, our taxpayers, yes? Is there a way in which we could educate maybe county residents in general, to your point, I think, Andy? I could see that as well.
Sure, I'm make sure of it. That's kind of what I was thinking, just because it, I don't know, for some reason in my mind, it feels a little bit more general than versus just by district. You know, there's, I just think about our community and, and a, and a whole, and I think a lot of people, if it came from. The whole, a, a group, they would be like, oh, well, the state's got a real issue, instead of, oh, that school district's got a real issue.
I think part of, and I think enough residents, certainly board members, you understand. Um you know, part of the dynamic is, you know, from the north side of Sturgeon Bay, south is kind of one fiscal picture.
Yep.
And then as we go a little bit north, and then certainly further north, it's a different fiscal picture, right? They could use some of the terminology, but you know, some of the impact on maybe Sebastopol and certainly on Gibraltar, right? Well, when you're getting, you know, basically nothing from the state or very little, and maybe somewhere in between. Say where Southern Door and us are at, and maybe Sebastopol, you know, some of that real impact can vary a little of that, makes sense? Without, again, using all the terminology, anything you would add to that, Jake?
Um yeah, I did reach out, uh I was on a, you know, anyway, if uh Gibraltar and Sebastopol. Very minimal impact, because they aren't getting state aid.
Sure.
Um I did actually, I talked to Tim Coles, you mentioned the, the special ed piece, I don't know if it was a slip, you said that it was more than what. Uh the Representative Kitchens had hoped for, there is a story out on uh Door County Daily News. Uh that mentioned the, the pro- the proposal would see um the state covering ninety percent of special ed costs. I felt obligated to reach out to Tim Coles and say, well, yes and no. That's ninety percent of the high cost special ed, which is a very select, I, I should, a, a very few kids. Um in reality, it's thirty-five and thirty-seven and a half percent, um and then there was a follow-up phone call. Uh to that uh with Tim Coles, um and so, yeah, spoke a little bit with uh our neighbors to the north. Um not so much yet with Southern Door, I have a feeling. Though it, it'll impact them a little bit more than us uh for a number of reasons, um. So uh some communication and then some communication already with, just kind of saying, this is what it is with Tim Coles.
Good, thank you.
Jake, one, one just final question on this, and I'm kind of asking, several months ago, back like bench in times and a little bit after that. The kind of the word of whispers that you were hearing was that people were kind of on the same page. Like for specialized funding, that we're gonna get some more of that, and how do we get here? Because it's like, we, it was actually optimistic that maybe, maybe people were gonna work together at the state level to help. To open some of these manners, and again, not being, not party specific, they, they were agreeing, yes, we know there's a problem there. And now it seems like it's gone the other direction, where, where now, there, we're, 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 we're potentially worse positioned. Than when we started.
I think um within the last month, I think Dan first heard it at a DCEDC meeting. Um we started hearing that rather than putting all the money in the uh general ca- uh special ed categorical aid. That they were looking at the high-cost aid. Uh I'm not sure where that came from, uh. You know, certainly that'll help uh some districts, some estimates, say about half the districts in the state. Uh we might have one, I think we have one moving in uh coming this next year, uh that, that could. Um impact us there, um. There's that, I, I. You know, as you read some of the stuff that's out there, there's some, you know, uh political. Side-eyeing, if you will, um specifically around the three hundred twenty-five dollar per year line item veto, um. Yeah, I, I, I mean, the special ed, not sure where the switch to high-cost ed, high-cost game, or high-cost special ed came. From um as far as the other stuff, I, I certainly do not envy. Uh those in Madison that have to try and balance, you know, uh you know, just like we're trying to do on a micro scale, uh. You know, comparatively macro scale, trying to balance that, um. Yeah.
But to your point, like, oh yeah, I heard from various authorities, joint finance level, speaker boss, et cetera, like. I don't know how we get through the state budget without doing something for this special ed reimbursement, because it's impacting all these things. I think some would say it's word salad or positioning to say, oh yeah, we're gonna do a bunch for our special education aid. You know, we kind of just gloss past the high-cost part, knowing most people have no idea what that is, oh, they're doing a big increase for special ed. Okay, I was told. Okay, I was told in Awazda, our district administrator, a group Zoom meeting two Wednesdays ago. That the high cost special education aid bucket of money is basically forty times smaller than the. Special educated, right? So you can figure like, oh, we can get a lot of soundbites out of that for minimal cost. Versus this other one, which again, I don't know what the number is. I've heard Joel say it, like, at the legislative level, they know for every percent. Right? They would increase special education reimbursement, right? Like it costs about this much money to save on, right? So they're, they're aware of that. So, I don't know, maybe some would say this is something that they'll figure out in the bottom of the ninth. Optimistic, pessimistic? I would say probably some of the legislative leaders are trying to stick it to the governor's line item veto to say, fine. Take your three twenty-five and we're not gonna help you with it. Local property taxpayers are gonna foot the bill for that. There'll be an outcry in every community of the state and then we'll see what happens. Or somewhere in between. Yeah. Just think, that's only the preliminary budget.
So, uh, just to call the question, get back to this, so do, we're looking for a motion to approve the preliminary budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Let's back then.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jenner John, second by Commissioner Hanz to approve the preliminary budget for twenty twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, for the discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Now we're down to, maybe I'll add, not to belabor the point, but one or two more sentences, board members, you know this, but for anyone tracking this. What just occurred basically means the administration has the statutory authority to continue to run the district. And once we get past July one, have expenses, pay people, pay our bills. Even though the board, right, our governing body, won't approve the true budget until the October board meeting. After we get the information from the state, right? And is it strange that July, August, September, and a chunk of October have already passed by the time we approve it? It is, but that's the way the state of Wisconsin does it. Upset.
Now down to the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six board meeting calendar.
Probably even more discussion about this one, maybe not, alright. Uh, so, okay, you saw a draft last month, we talked about it after setting the date, you see a few of the high points and we kind of tweak. For example, the month of October, rather than traditionally the third Wednesday, which we know we established. Right? It's not uncommon for us to go to the fourth Wednesday to give more time for Jake to prepare the materials. Based on the Act over fifteen certification, make sure the public has a chance to take a look if interested, et cetera. We also see a little point, right? We usually tweak the January meeting depending on the education convention. Um, and again, other things around learning session. So really, just a motion to approve the board meeting calendar for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year is recommended.
I'm moved to approve the board meeting calendar for twenty-five, twenty-six, basically. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Myers, seconded by Commissioner Cruz to approve. The board meeting calendar for twenty twenty-five, twenty, twenty-six fiscal year. For the discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, now we are down to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six CISA eight service contract.
Yes. And thank you for emphasizing eight, right?
I know.
As board members, you know, we're members of CISA seven, CISA eight provides some services as outlined here. Especially for some of our kiddos with I E Ps that CISA seven does not provide. So that's really all it is. It can change at times. Uh, Director Ferry stays on top of this and keeps Jake and me in the loop as needed. So really, that's kind of how that works. I'll just jump right to it. A motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six CISA eight services contract is recommended.
I'm moved to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six CISA eight services contracts.
All right, we have, uh, Fisher Hawes made a motion by Commissioner Meyer, seconding it. To approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six CISA eight service, services contract. Further discussion? Are you none of all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So now we're down to reports?
We are.
We are.
So someone wanted to talk about legislative stuff, didn't they?
Big, 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 big.
Everything's about third grade reading. All that comes through right now.
There we go, some bits.
Um. I do, I do have one thing personally, I did, uh, once a year, we do go through the TIF TID. Um, we go through all of that, the, it's a requirement for the city. And I, and I go to those meetings and, uh, I guess I'll. I have, I have notes and things on it, but the, but the reality is, is, is everything looks. All those districts look good. Some, some are are going to be, um, put to bed early, it looks like. There's only one that doesn't look good. You probably could guess which one that is from the, from the papers through all the years, and that's the West Waterfront. But, uh, other than that, everything, everything looks great.
I mean, that's great.
Is there anything coming off soon?
Yeah, sorry, should have brought my notes on it, but yes, I mean, for one, the, the, the whole, um, industrial park. You know, it was.
Yeah, we knew that one.
We knew that one.
CBI building or CBI property?
Uh, I believe that still has a few years left, but there were, there was, there, there was like. For example, the, the one that, that we really had a huge, uh, deal on when we decommissioned the school. That, like, everything's virtually built out on that. They have a few. Possible like sidewalk projects or stuff like that, unification projects, but it's ahead of schedule and that will, that will. Will close probably earlier. Uh, but it, it, that's an example of something that really is working, right?
I mean, you said probably, I thought that in a few years.
It does.
Oh, okay.
But, but I mean, I mean, it's, it's, everything is, is flowing through because everything that got built, so you have the tax revenues coming in and, and it's. And it's, there hasn't been really an impediment to that, to that one, I guess. And that's, that's most of, we have, we have apartment buildings that have been, we, we have things that are. Are in the hopper now with the portside and, and now a lot, a lot of the things that were also covered were not our district. Because some of that's Southern Door, so it's really us and Southern Door. So the superintendent from Southern Door was there. And, uh, uh, I don't know, I, I find that very interesting, because also they talk about what. What is, what is happening. So, anyway, that's it. It's, it's a good, it's a good thing.
Maybe we can work on some of your notes. And work, maybe you and I can be in contact and then Ann can help us and we can push that out to everybody so you have those updates. Cause I know you had talked to me right after the meeting. I think maybe just the one note I would add for the board. And, uh, probably Tina's heard it the most times, right? As we sometimes say, right? I know several years ago. As a board, certainly wanted to, you know, be supportive and work with the city, but there were some concerns on the TIF and TID front that the communication was not good. Um, that all of a sudden, you know, the occasional joint review board meeting would come up and I'm trying to think of, you know. Often we've, you know, some places have the superintendent go, which is fine, whether it's going back to John Hauser or Mike or Terry Hooker, right? When we would talk, it's like, well, having one of the board members represent as an elected official, you know, kind of a nice touch if it's workable. And also making sure that the city continues to share the updates. So everyone understands, okay, here's what's going on with all of these, not all of a sudden. Every couple of years you hear, oh, they extended one again and none of this is ever ending. Uh, so I think the city got the message loud and clear. I should add to that. This was around COVID time, so we ended up meeting in the middle school commons, so we could all space out, right? But the reality is, we had several city council members and several board members. And then Jake and, and myself from kind of our administration, and then I think both Josh and Marty from the city sat down. And it was basically a dialogue between some city council members and board members. We had very little, they needed us to say or do. And to talk about this type of thing, the mayor attended as well and kind of pledged. Both on the reassessment front, that we not have a repeat of that whole mess. And, um, the TIF TID front, like, that there will be regular updates. We won't have a situation where this builds up through a few years and people don't know what's going on. And since that point, um, it has. At least that communication updates, from my perspective, have been much better.
There's been many meetings, I've, I've been to, I've been to all of them and are most of all of them. And they, they, they're very transparent. So it's, it's a, yeah, I'll definitely get. Second, get the packet, that would probably be the best thing, packet for that, cause that kind of summarized it.
Their little maps and everything.
Yeah, maps and everything, which is, which is nice, but, um, they're, they're certainly moving and shaking. They're trying to, so. That was Marty's last meeting for that, for that, uh, deal, because he would be retiring literally like. The next day or two days later. And they have, they have, uh, they, you know, they have, you know, they have candidates in, in the, in the mix on that. For his position as well, so it's, I don't think they're gonna miss a beat. Josh is very plugged in and involved. So, um, Josh family show for those. Um, so anyway, that, that's, that's all I want to say about that. So. I think we're too administrative.
Right? Good news. Well, well, Mr. Principals know that they do not have to give a report in summer.
That's right.
So, is there anything for the peanut gallery that you wanted to highlight or you do not need to?
Okay, I'll pop up.
Summer school, good meeting.
Summer, oh, summer school, you have how many over at Sunrise? You told me the number today, I apologize, I forgot.
The heart's made of like, down with the, the counter for our building, it was on, well, it was really sonic, it's been, it's been exciting, so.
Wow.
I'll add to that, four K camp is going marvelously and, um. The other four K numbers are almost sixty, they're never that like at this point.
Excellent.
Very excited. That's part of summer school, but it's absolutely.
And this is only our second year, right, of offering the four K camp, if I remember right?
Private after, small scale and then it was last time, it was all good.
Yeah. Good work to the Sawyer team over there. Again, you heard from them before as far as trying to wrap their arms around those kiddos and families. With that event they had this spring to get a better idea, not only in count, right, from the part we have to deal with. But transitioning and welcoming those kids to, to Sawyer. And again, the number at Sunrise was a hundred and ten, maybe for someone who's listening to this later, I've been at summer school with a few more kiddos anticipated. That's good, 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 different things secondary wise with sports and camps and other things are also in motion, so John Dupree and our coach, and I know I've been working on, on that.
May I mention, um, um, our co-regular meeting, is that what it was?
Oh, yeah.
Called as?
They have that as well.
Outstanding. Didn't you think, Mike?
Yes.
I thought it was so well organized and I.
Yes, I do. Yeah.
Nice. Um, it really, it was so well organized, um, like all the coaches were there, it's the kids' coaches, the. Um, help me, not the pep assembly, the mo-. Thank you, the booster club was there, getting volunteer signed up. I just thought it was great. It was really well attended too. So, I was really impressed.
And there was, there was, there were some things that were hit that were brand new, like didn't even like this thing because that's.
Yeah, there was a, yeah, oh, yes.
There's a whole contact thing on that.
Yeah, it was, I, yeah, it was interesting.
And even like, uh, you know, he had mentioned, like, for, for anyone, this is good for the people watching. If, if anyone is homeschool and they want to be part of the athletic, um, complex here at Sturgeon Bay. And, and you be involved in anything, they should contact our athletic director. Uh, just to have a conversation, which, which I thought was great too, that he was mentioning that and talking about that.
Lot more options nowadays than there used to be, as we all know, post-COVID. And with those things, there get to be, you can imagine, gets a little complicated with the W I A A and, right? What's homeschooling versus virtual school versus taking online classes through us and why not? So John Dupree's really throwing himself into there to help try to ensure for coaches, kids, and parents, no one gets in a, in a bad spot.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think we're about, could be around three, four years in a row. Now, maybe we've run the meeting in June. Uh, but this is kind of like the best iteration of it with the most information, probably. It's different, uh, involvement yet.
John's, uh, energy has been fantastic. I mean, just from a parent standpoint, I mean. The changes he made, I, I wasn't at the meeting, but I actually had people mention me, it was totally different, it's great, you know? Um, so just very happy with the things he's done. Uh, and then just on a similar note, I just wanted to verbalize, uh, uh, good luck to the Kiwanee baseball team tomorrow at State. Uh, they're playing for state championship and, uh, not that I love Kiwanee with all my heart, but they are Packerland, friend of ours, so. Um, and then they're, they're playing for a special reason this year too. They've got some things going on, so, uh, good luck to them.
I have a quick question for the principals back, um, so with all those students this summer, I mean, how is it going? Do you have enough support or is there anything you do need?
Come on down so the fancy owl cameras can pick you up, Principal Smallen.
Oh, guys, they're looking at the playground.
So, as Katie's coming forward to the podium, although technically not in my sports, right? For the board, right, this is, that's okay. It's our, uh. Second year of the current iteration of summer school after what would be three summers ago, we kind of piloted relaunching, right? Not trying to get in the way of the Boys and Girls Club, the Y M C A, right? If anything, partner with them, right? If you want to just touch on that too, maybe Katie. But really remember, there are benefits to summer school and not just helping kids and families. And know the district member doesn't make money off summer school, but kind of that F T E of students attending, whether it's the fun stuff. Whether it's literacy help or a combination thereof, does have a positive benefit on how school finance works in Wisconsin. So. Go ahead, what do you need, first of all, to Commissioner, uh, Myers' question and go.
We're doing, we are very grateful. We have our, um, Nicole Peterson, who is working as a summer school secretary, so that's awesome. Amanda Wilkie is the coordinator, so having both of those roles have been great and TAs to help support. So classes like robotics have been awesome and, um. Part of this Act twenty, eventually they, you know, they want kids to be in to do phonics and just get that reading up. So we really are, um, that's exciting to see that happening and then pairing it with fun things like volleyball. And then like Randy Shoneman is bringing in like, teach, like, middle schoolers to help coach the volleyball with them. And so that's been great. So I'm good, I think we're good. And the, we work with the Boys and Girls Club and the Y M C A, so they can be bused to and from, and they've been great partners. Um, honestly, I would love to offer more, more kids who are struggling with reading to be able to, like, just continue to remove barriers. For them, that would be my goal, because just to have everybody at grade level. So it's really fun, like, we're, we're doing lemonade stand again, and, I mean, there's this draw. So even if you're in there because you really need to get that extra practice, we still want to make it fun, like. So, but I think we're good right now. Yeah.
Is edible chemistry running again or has that been replaced?
Yeah, it's gonna be, that was, it had a good run, that might be.
It was a popular one.
It was a popular one. Robotics has been a big hit and a lot of the sports ones, and so like what else? Spanish, Jessica Lothane does Book Lovers, where she does art, and then they're baking cupcakes today and it always relates to a story. So kind of things you don't, it's harder to do during the school day. So their kids are measuring and mixing. It's like, you know, a smaller group and it's just, yeah. It's good stuff. A lot of running around and, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think middle school is going well too. They're doing, I know Abby is in a biking and hiking adventure and they went to Snowport. Snow, um, crap, yeah, there you go. And did the pump course. I don't know, they're really creative offerings there, so they're, um, I know they're full. Like, so that's a good sign. I don't know the numbers, but, so, a lot of good stuff.
Katie, do you know how many of our private school kids are?
I wish I did. I know we've got, I, I'm learned, yeah, we've got, I know, I can count four or five. I know there's like a handful, at least ten probably of private school kids that pop over, which is great. Like, they're welcome and kids from other districts, yeah.
Thank you, Katie.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, we transition a business manager holds, if he has anything to add, I can say the other principal, Smallen, may have made, I think, four or five home visits today. To a few of our middle schoolers that maybe not so much about the enrichment, but needing a little help. With some things to make, because of some academic business they did not make care of during this, I think he was able to make family connections on all but one of those. Uh, but it's, uh, is on the hunt, maybe even this evening, maybe gonna connect with a, a parent. Or a kiddo that we need to, I do some summer school. So I know he was working on that today. Jake, what do you got?
Uh, I put in front of you, I finished this about two, three o'clock, um, just a year-end projection. Uh, we actually do still have access to forecast five, um. Uh, maybe just through the end of the month, we'll see, uh, looking. Um, looking at a projection of, uh, hundred thousand, uh, surplus year-end. Um, I, I, I didn't get to go through line by line, some of the big notes. Uh, we did get a, a decent Medicaid payment in May, uh, so that helps prop up that total revenue. Uh, I don't know if or where I might have mentioned it. The final special ed categorical, general categorical aid reimbursement. Uh, ended up being thirty point six four, I believe, a budget at thirty-one percent, so we were within. Ten thousand dollars on that one, um. And so I I have that number kind of plugged into the final projection, and so that all helps with the revenues. Um, looking at salaries, uh, most of that's going to be where we switched over mid-year to having to mention the R N, our nurse, uh, in-house. Rather than in purchase services through the hospital, um. And then the other objects, transfers, uh, I put this in as a placeholder holder last month. Uh, I believe it's, uh, I have in there sixty thousand dollars, fund fifty transfer, um. Preliminary look at numbers, I. And optimistic it won't be that high, um, when it comes to year end. But I do think we will need to transfer into food services, uh, to get that fund balance back to zero uh this year. So.
Any question there, otherwise I'll run with it. Again, you have my report, uh, I won't touch on all the items, my kind of annual thank you, uh, I pulls from the superintendent chair. And one last time from the apparent chair, at least in the K twelve world, so I wanted to make sure that that'll be a part of what I send to all staff. Uh, the summer book read, again, some of you have already read this and this has been on your radar, but again, the second batch. Was popular enough that the anxious generation, my first order, um, all of those found homes, so. I had Ashley order another batch, so if you, I know some people have been in contact, and even if you haven't, if you're interested, let me know, I got one here and several uh more back at the office. Um.
They're anxious to read, huh?
There we go, okay, anxious, well, Allison, I know it gets a little excited, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, there was some interest also from some members of the P T O, um. Who are kind of hip to this subject and wanted to, if we do end up having a discussion. They were wondering, you know, if we could extend the invite to other community members, like specifically the P T O. To talk with the administrator or board about takeaways from the book.
Sounds like a learning session.
Really, or could be a shared document, even asynchronous learning, if people don't do it at the same time. Or a combination thereof.
I don't even know what that means.
We're gonna work on it together, but not at the same time.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of like more of the online learning asynchronous versus synchronous.
Dan loves the Google documents, remember, so he.
Why keep, why, why wouldn't you?
Yeah.
He should be loved with Google. I'll tell you, as a high school principal, it saved a lot of headaches, being able to have only one accurate version of a document out there, from the homecoming schedule to many other things. Alright, I'll finish with the last page of my report, uh, I hope people wanted to say more about the anxious generation. Actually, Allison, I know would love to say more, but she, she also knows we want to meet her.
It's maybe about, yeah, it's okay.
Um, that's right, and we were, I was not fast enough, you know. Right, I think you would. Is it January or I'm trying to think how long ago you already were on this one? Um, communications and marketing, I sent you an email yesterday, did not need, remember all the board members to weigh in, right? Some of you are more passionate about these types of topics than others, right? We all work to our strengths, totally get it. But if someone did have any thoughts on this, if you want to just kind of funnel it my way, ideally by the end of next week. Um, and again, really just the first three pages, Brian's team really put together. Again, makes sense, I think there's some things in here, a few things I I'm not positive on, I've shared my scribbles to you. Brian has received those as well, and he knows we're planning to uh to connect uh here uh soon. Admin team will talk about it just briefly as a part of the conference we're at next week. Uh, so, yeah, feel free to share anything with me there, the timeline is meant to be adapted, um. So don't worry about the months that are on there. And then the last thing I'll actually touch on, one of my least favorite topics Jake can tell you, as can our insurance consultants, is health insurance. Alright, and I once had a very entertaining conversation with Brian Stevens about health insurance, which. He said some things you wouldn't necessarily expect, but also makes some sense, right, because of his day job. Anyway, we had that meeting today, I already mentioned, so we'll see. Jake and I are already brainstorming, like not only uh board members, like doing what we normally do in your learning sessions, but maybe getting. At least some of the compensation committee reps to learn about some of these other products. Some of you are very familiar, you know, self-funded or, you know, the captive, that, you know, there's, there's different ways of looking at it as an offshoot of self-funded. Uh, really, that whether it's the next renewal, right, in the next year, we're going on a path like that, or it's. As I told Jake, several years from now, like, you know, some of that certainly is the future and getting some of our. You know, probably teacher leaders to help understand, who can then take information back and forth, right, as as a board and district, right? We look across all of compensation, right, it's not just the paycheck, it's not just this, this, how that all fits. We know that kind of our teacher leaders who've been engaged in this conversation in recent years, who post employment to pay and all that in between. Have liked the approach for the most part we've taken and giving options, knowing, okay, maybe we can't pay as much in all ways that another district, two districts to the north can. Newsflash, everyone in Wisconsin knows that, but the way in which we're approaching and giving options has worked for them, so. Again, early on, more to come, uh, but I think that'll be one of those topics that we'll, you know, have some work sessions on and certainly. We'll keep the board, you know, an opportunity to be involved and and updated as you need to be. I'll end on that. And it's.
I think that is it, and it brings us to, um, do a little motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Alright, second, is that okay? Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner Hons, second by Commissioner Schultz to adjourn. Further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Your adjourn. Thank you.